We'll call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, June 16th, 2022. Five thirty PM. Call to order, roll call. Mike Ablyn? John Baylott is not here. David Cobb?
Here.
Douglas Dunn here. Sandy Housman likewise is absent. Nancy Piranha?
Here.
Mike Spitzberg?
Here.
And Mel, our city council liaison?
Here.
Ashley Coronado?
I'm here.
Staff liaison, so we're glad to have the two of you here. So we're off and call the public, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak on any issue other than agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in the general call to the public?
Ashley, are you temporary liaison or is this a full-time?
Kind of temporary.
She goes in on everywhere.
Yeah, I figured that.
You're a good soldier. Agenda item one is the public hearing on a proposed amendment to the zoning code. Possible recommendation of the mayor and council. Consideration of a request for the transfer of approximately eighty-seven square feet of city property located south of 136 OK Street, more specifically defined by the legal description as at the corner of number three.
The viatton?
The viatton, okay. Claim. The property is loan R1. The applicant is Robert and Denise Corvino. We'll start off with, is there a staff report?
There, I have been supplied nothing unfortunately, I apologize.
Okay. The item is presented here. I'll start off then with calling for a public hearing, which is now open. Does anyone wish to speak on this issue?
Sure. I'm Robert Corvino. So I was hoping Doug Taylor had left his recommendation with you guys before he left, but he did not, I assume.
Well, there's proposed motions, I'm assuming that's his recommendation.
He wasn't favor of it. This is a, it's sort of the tip of a, I call it, if you look from above, it's the shape of a boat. So it looks like the bow of a boat. It's kind of interesting, only last December did we not, did we find out that this tip was divested by the previous owners, because the map we got from our title company had that tip attached, and I had that with me if you want to see it from 2013. So I did some investigation during another request to you, to your council. If you recall, last year there was a bigger parking proposal made up of six or seven parcels. This was one of them. And I've been trying to divest this parcel out of that proposal since then. So this has been going on two years. And only then did we realize it was not ours, because we've been tending it, beautifying it, cleaning it all these years, and not thinking it was ours. So I'd like to get it back. Apparently the previous owners gave it to the city for some reason. We never spoke with them during our purchase, so I can't tell you why they did it. I can only guess, maybe they didn't want the stairs, I'm not sure. My neighbor Ernie Garcia is here, he's the one who lives down below the stairs. I don't want to speak for you, Ernie, but you know, those are the only two properties, three properties actually, he has two, that the stairs serve. I use those stairs, we use those stairs more than our front door, to get in and out of our property. And that's our lot adjacent to it, so we just want to reattach the tip. And that's the history, so I've paid the application fee to get it back. I'd like you to please consider that.
Are there any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. The wall, so if you go up the steps and then you turn, then you return to the right, that is that, that's the wall?
That is OK Street.
And that is the OK Street wall?
Up the stairs or downstairs?
Up the steps, it looks like.
That's, that's the OK Street wall, that's the.
Hi, Ernie Garcia.
Hi, Ernie.
Just a demonstration, if you're coming from his property?
Right.
You're coming this way?
That's right.
And then you're going up the stairs?
That's right.
And right here is a big telephone pole, and then our garbage cans. And then what, what he's talking about right there is part, not part of the wall, but the line is the wall of OK Street and the dirt, that the gas line is on our property.
Yeah. That's the wall, right?
This is, well, when you say the wall, this is the, this is the street.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, and it begins, it stops there at the, at the beginning of the staircase.
Right.
Then it continues forty-eight inches past this point, again, all the way up to OK.
And then how, how many feet is this?
Seventeen feet, I suppose.
Seventeen feet. And then forty-eight inches on the other side.
This is probably like.
Which one? This is, it's actually on both. It's this teeny little thing, see the stairs? There's nine stairs there.
Is that triangle right there?
Yeah, it's a triangle, which is enlarged on your next page. So it's, see how it's cut off?
So that's, so this is your parcel?
Yeah, this is our parcel and that's our parcel.
So you own both of these?
Yeah, and there's actually no more alleyway there either. That's, that's part of our land that's, oh.
My next, my next question is the, the stairs, are they in OK or disrepair?
They're in really good condition for some, for something that hasn't been taken care of. In fact, we painted them a really pretty color scheme a long time ago and put tile on the sides.
We had to, with the, we didn't know that it wasn't, it wasn't anybody's, but when the stairs were put in, back in sixty-four, sixty-five, we've been adding to them to make them actual stairs, because people just threw concrete up or threw a block up or whatever, and now they're actually stairs.
Yeah, I understand.
Only one of the stairs has a chip out of it about that big.
But as far as you've been living there, you, you were not aware, you thought it was naturally part of yours?
It, I could show you, I'll show you the map we got from our title company, which, when I found out at the assessor's office, they were using their own source and not the true maps. So I guess they have to, who do the stairs belong to? Well, it would have been Husky Farm. They're probably, it belongs to the city right now.
That's what I thought, the stairs belong to the city.
Yeah, they do. Well, that whole, the tip belongs to the city right, right. See how it's not cut off there?
Right.
That's the map we got with our loan packet. You can see it's dated, it's, that's my initials, these are my initials, 2013. This is writing from the assessor's office. So that's what we were given. I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
So it was a big surprise that it wasn't really ours.
And did you have the property surveyed? I mean, at any point?
Well, for this meeting, I did. Do you have all the, do you have the new legal description of the tip?
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, so when you did this, you, there are now survey pins, all of them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the description. I don't, you know, I don't know how many pins there needs to be, I'm not a survey.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
But, well, there's the survey.
Yeah.
You help out vehicles.
Okay.
What did your title, did you present this to your title company?
I didn't, no, I didn't. I figured, what am I going to do?
That's why you have title insurance. Yeah. One of the reasons why you have title insurance is for errors and omissions. I mean, that's why it's called title insurance, correct Nancy?
Correct.
And so I'm.
I should, how's that?
So my understanding, I just want to make sure I understand is that the stairs and that tip, the assumption is that the city owns it?
Yeah, they, in fact.
You bought it.
We found records at the assessor's office that the former owner actually gave it up right before our sale.
So he, he gave it back to the city?
Yeah.
Right before your sale?
Well, pretty, pretty close to the sale date.
So there's documentation that shows it was transferred?
Yes.
To the city?
Yes, from the carpenters, that was their name.
And what was the logic for this?
We don't have a clue.
I don't know, I can only assume they didn't want liability for people falling down stairs. I, I really don't know, I can only guess. We don't even know that, you know how the sales go, sometimes they're in another state? They were in San Diego during the whole transfer, so I never met them.
There must be some logic, probably we need to have some on this. Would there be taxes involved, property taxes on a lot of that?
A slight increase if we get it back.
It would be more of a liability, the reason why you get it's possible liability.
I think it's a liability.
But either way, I would think your title company might be liable if you made this purchase for you if it's approved.
Well, it's only, the application was the biggest, was more expensive than the property's loan.
Understood.
But if we could get a few hundred dollars back from them without a legal fight.
The issue from my perspective is liability.
For whoever owns it. But I mean, I haven't owned it.
So right now the city owns it, you're claiming that you guys own it?
No, no, I'm claiming that it's ours.
He wants it back.
I just want it back.
But you never had it in the first place.
No.
So.
I understand.
I'm just trying to understand.
I just want to buy it from the city.
So you want to buy it from the city, the city owns it?
Yes.
Are we sure that the city owns it?
Yes.
And then when you bought it, your title company provided this survey?
No, no, I did all that of my expense.
So you, when you bought it, your title report recorded its meets, what are called meets and bounds, where the corners are and everything else. So when you bought it, was that corner part of your title report?
Only in map form, not in description. So they messed up that map.
Which is common, because survey pins and whatnot are not always easy to recognize.
The legal description is something I learned how to read only last December. I'm not, I'm not.
So does the legal description show that you're the owner of this?
No.
No.
And then, did Mr. Sample do this, the survey?
I don't remember his name, I have his email.
And then I'm just asking because we're noticing that his, his seal is not there?
On the survey, right Nancy?
On the survey.
It's not a legal, it's not a legal survey.
Right here, and it just could be an omission on his behalf? But it should be, there should be a stamp there?
With his name on it?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Sample, he's one of the two surveyors in town.
He's the same guy who did the survey of the all seven parcels for the deets. Remember the deets meetings?
Yeah.
I was at those. He's the same guy, he said, I already have done the work, I'll just take yours and enlarge it and put it on.
Understood.
And, and come up with a legal description for you.
Nancy, do you believe the stairs have any ingress or egress issues to the OK Street?
So fortunately or unfortunately, I had the same exact thing happen to me on the very first piece of property that I purchased here. And it was the people trying to get out of taking care of the stairs.
That's what I thought.
And also, even though that piece of property, that thirteen, seventeen feet, even though that is OK Street, if that for any reason falls down, then right now, say it fell in right now, say that seventeen feet fell, that would be up to the city to repair.
It's not part of OK Street, it's dirt.
It's the wall, it's the wall, that is, is the corner, I mean, the side of the property, like this right here?
Yeah.
And then the property's here.
Yeah, it's not.
And OK Street is here.
Just like, just like my lot has a wall on OK Street, so does that.
I understand.
It's the, the property does not include any part of OK Street or driveway.
So basically, it just so happens that what just happened to you will happen to me in 2000 on my very first piece of property.
So yeah, I guess, you know, people double check their records. I mean, I'm talking about title companies, that shouldn't have happened, obviously.
But that's why you have title insurance.
So you're recommending me to go to, I think it was Pioneer, I'm not sure, it's been so long.
Well, I mean, it's one step of several, unfortunately, for a rinky-dink little piece of land, but it's the, the protocol dictates that you should go to your title company. And the title company needs to go back into their chain of title. That's how you link things backwards, and they need to come back to you and say, we made a mistake, or whatever it is, that would be the first step.
Well, since it's not in the legal description, I would consider the only mistake they made was to give us this, this map that is outdated. And, I mean, it's easier for me, I felt, just to do it legally, fly it back to the city.
Hey Mel, what would be the implications of the stairs?
Well, is that, is that for any reason, Nancy, sometimes? This is, this is what I'm just thinking, I mean, just first, why would you want, just because I need to understand this whole, why would you want this transfer back to you?
Okay.
I mean, I just want to understand that.
Picture, picture this.
The stairs, do the stairs, the stairs don't go to anywhere but your front door?
No, the stairs go to, gosh, I have a picture. Can I, can I email that, can I text you the photo of it, so we could all see it?
Text it to me.
Well, I don't know how to get it off my phone, I'll just show you this back. It, it's actually, my house is not even on that adjacent lot, let me just, this will.
The stairs go down to my property.
So there's the stairs, there's this, this, nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine stairs.
Right.
This is my property right here.
Okay.
This is the triangle, so if you were to see it from above. Here it is. From above, it's, see the, see that handrail?
Yeah.
If you were to make a diagonal line from the handrail to the OK Street wall?
Yeah.
It's this bushy area here that includes the garbage pavilion, which, which I've been taking care of, you know, since before they started picking up garbage.
So the only person that has a problem with ingress egress is you?
Well, these are private stairs built by your family, I guess, back in the sixties?
Those aren't public stairs.
No.
Understood.
They go to my houses, and now they go there.
So they, it was never a public staircase?
No, no, it wasn't.
Understood.
And you see that the condition is very good except for that one little chip?
Okay, gotcha.
The public staircase is a little bit further south, that goes from OK Street all the way down to Virgo Street.
So I use these stairs to get in and out of our property, I'd say eighty-five percent of the time.
So if it was, let's just go, help you understand, so if this was city property, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Garcia would have to give him a recorded easement to be able to use those stairs, if it was city stairs. Since there's not city stairs.
But currently they are.
But they are, if we own it.
Yeah. That's why he wants them back, he said they were taken by the city.
Like this property owns it and you had them, this is what it's with.
So, so when you.
I don't think Mr. Car, I think, just, it's on a, just on what I'm thinking and what I knew, Mr. Carpenter, I think he didn't want a hassle with me, because those stairs were the only thing going down to my house. So I think that's why he gave up the rest, the stairs and the rest of that triangle. That's what I'm thinking. That he didn't want a hassle with me.
Okay, I got you.
So the carpenters owned that triangle that I'm trying to get back. They gave it to the city, I think it's the same year we bought that adjacent lot, and the title company never caught up with the purchase, so we got the wrong map, we got the right legal description, but I didn't know how to read a legal description, to be honest with you. So I always assumed it was ours.
Understood.
When the, when that parcel was attached to the bigger city parcels that you guys wanted to sell or auction last, two years ago, I said, can we please divest that triangle so that I can buy it back? And that's where I am today.
Thank you.
And I got, and I did follow the instructions I got from Doug Taylor, which was all I need was a survey and a legal description and the application fee.
Thank you.
So I, I can't see what, of what benefit does the city own this, other than, other than an already increased liability? And I, do I make a motion? Or, or not yet?
We're not there yet.
All right, other further comments?
No, sir.
Did you want to speak?
No, well, in the, in the long run, I have no, no issues with Bud using that and resharing it, I have no problem with any of that.
Other questions of the applicant?
I, I just, I let Ashley know that I have to leave town should this go to the city council. I cannot be there July 5th, although I would be, I've been at every meeting that you guys have for the last few years, you know, about these areas. Cannot be here July 5th, but Ashley took my phone number, so I hope that's enough should I not be there.
There are no one else who wishes to speak on this, and I'll close the public hearing. Commission discussion.
I have a first comment, I'm not going to beat up Mel here.
Go ahead.
City council put all land sales on hold, did they not?
Yes.
Yes.
We were not informed last meeting, it was done by city council the Tuesday before our last meeting, and the staff liaison did not notify us of that.
Understood.
My, also, my understanding is that city council wants to meet with us to discuss future sales of this property. Do you have any information on that?
Not right now, I couldn't give you any information right now.
I do have information on that. According to the reporter in The Observer, there was a question about things that are already in the queue, which this was, and it said, except, and it's in quotes, if you could go back to the article, except for those in the queue. So, so I feel like.
This one is not in the queue because it has not been approved by us, nor has it been approved by city council.
Well, I thought the official study.
No, the queue is when it's been approved and it's supposed to go to auction. I personally don't have a problem with this. I remember when you guys all came out and wanted to do the seven, the split. I think, I don't think anybody else's council has an objection to this. It's just, what is city council going to do?
Well, I'll have to come back on this, and the only, my, my thought on this, like I said, and you know, I hate to come to this, I just want to find why, there must be some logic, why would the city take this property back? I need to investigate this, we need, I mean, it's here saying, you're saying.
The biggest.
Just give me a second.
I'm sorry.
You're saying, you know, he doesn't have a problem, but eventually if you sell his property, it may go somewhere else. We need to make sure there's a logic, there must, there must have been a reason for the city to have taken this property back. I cannot make any recommendation now, we'll say anything unless we go back and find out what was the reason that the city has taken this back. There must have been some, some reason or some, some.
How would you, how would you find that out?
I would have to go back, I'll, I'll talk to the planner, I'll go back to the city manager, I'll talk, I'll talk to, to our person, what's his name?
There would have to be some sort of records with us accepting the property.
We need to find a record.
So, with, no, with us accepting it at a council meeting, possibly some discussion, that type of thing.
Yeah.
So we'd have to look for something like that.
And that's all I can say now, I mean, I, I don't have the answers, but I, but, and I have to be honest with you, it's here saying, someone said this, he said that, I cannot make a decision personally or recommendation, but you know, the team here can decide what to do.
And, and I think they considered this one to be in, starting the process because it had been noticed before they decided to put it.
Technically not in the queue, so you'll end up having to reverse it, if you go to the city council.
We'll make sure to be observing.
My only suggestion to this would be part of the sale and the deeding of it would be, would be, again, as we talked before, given an easement to those other properties. It, I'm sure you don't have a problem with.
I don't, I don't know how to do it.
But that would be something.
It's just been written in the deed. So that, that's, that is with Pioneer Title, it's just, it would be you giving an easement. Well, one, you could bring all this up from Pioneer Title, and then you could say that you wanted to give a recorded easement to.
Those properties.
Those, yeah, well, properties, but there's only one, correct?
Well, there's two.
When you sell it.
Yes.
Your kid gets mad at him.
Well, we haven't in years.
Can I say something?
There are, there are access and e, other egresses for those two properties, so should that, if those stairs weren't even there, we would still both be able to get to our houses, technically. So I don't.
Okay, you don't have a problem with the easement?
I don't have a problem with the easement, in fact. I would have put that in the legal description already, but Doug said I don't need one.
I would say the only reason you need one is if you request it, because you're, you're, you have the property that stands to lose value. So if, if you're not interested in, then you don't. You know, I read the letter that your wife and you have written, I think the, the issue we discussed it tonight, if I understand it correctly, if I'm wrong, we have a procedure at the city council of property that we'll auction, and you're going about this so your property does not go for auction because this, somebody may outbid you from what I read, that's what the letter says.
Yes, that's correct, that is a strange.
Okay, so we have, we have, we have a process that we go through. I think what you can do is, is go back and investigate why this, and a decision has to be made by, by, by the, by the group here and make a recommendation on this. But for us to say, well, I'm doing it so, because I don't want somebody to out, outbid me, I think that's the whole idea, you don't want to pay more.
No, it's not about how much, sir, it's about losing access to my property by a stranger from out of town who's getting sight unseen on something that's cheap, is going to out, excuse me, outbid me. It's like somebody blocking my front door.
But this would not go to the auction.
This is our.
Yeah, this would not go to auction, that's what I was going to tell you.
He sounds like he's suggesting, he's asking why I didn't want it to go to auction.
But he, he, it's his letter that says that, doesn't want it to go to auction.
At that time.
I responded to that.
It's under the, it's under the, the money amount.
I understand.
Yeah.
If we can get this done, sir, this has been.
Mike, okay, Mike over there. I think procedurally, I don't think any of us here object to what his desire is.
Correct.
However, I think to Mel's point, it's prudent to understand what underlying reason did the city take this back? There could be some, we don't know, there could be some utilities underneath there, we just don't know. And these are the types of things that I can tell you, Nancy had a problem, I bought the American Legion building, the title company told me that the skybridge doesn't exist, because in 1908, the Frankenberger brothers donated it back to the city, and the city had no idea, they owned it for a hundred years. So I understand, both Nancy and I. Point being is, we need to do the due diligence to first understand, was there a specific reason why the city took this back?
Who will be doing that?
We would make a recommendation, this board would make a recommendation to city council, that we would ask that the city council go back through their records and understand, as Ashley said, is there any records, any correspondence as to why the city took this back?
And Mr. Corvino, just so you are, we have no.
Yeah, nobody has.
If, if we weren't giving the, given the directive that the city was no longer just selling off any parts of the city, I don't think anyone, you would be getting a yes, probably from all of us, I'm not, I, I, you know.
It's going to take another two months, probably, yeah.
Right.
Because we were given specific instructions as to what to do and what not to do.
So personally speaking, I know you, everybody's got stories, excuse me, I'm losing my voice. So during the lockdown and COVID, my wife was able to work remotely. I've had a remote job for the last four years, so that didn't affect me, but she was able to live with me, it was cool. So last, you know, we've been reading the papers, companies are now almost forcing people to come back. That's what happened in November, so she's been gone two months. She's been gone for April, so, and you know, I miss her very much, so I, I want the freedom to be able to go back and forth to where she works, it's in San Francisco, just, and she's going to come back here, she's going to get another job where she can work remotely eventually, but you don't just quit your job, you know that, before you have another one. So we're in this situation now where I can't leave town because the meetings are no longer virtual, so all I would ask you guys, ladies and gentlemen, if you could please work with me for the scheduling, because I might be in San Francisco visiting my wife, and I just can't be here.
You also reserve the right that you can appoint somebody through proxy as, as your spokesperson. I'm just, I'm going to make every effort to accommodate you, and again, as Nancy said, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of this board, we have no problem approving this, subject to council doing their due diligence, because as I said, if perhaps there's an electrical line or a water line or some reason, and it's very common here in Bisbee that these things happen, we need to understand, and there may not be an answer, if there's no answer.
There's a telephone pole with a guide wire that goes across the tri- There's a telephone pole with a guide wire that goes across the tron.
You know the logic? I mean, the way I understand this, maybe, and correct me. So the stairs, you go to someone else's property, to yours, sir. And you have no problem with this. Eventually, let's say, a new neighbor comes in, and the gentleman here decides, well, I own the stairs. I bought this from the city. I'm going to demand it certainly. I think there must have been a logic for this, for the stairs to have been taken by the city. Because it doesn't just go to your property. It goes to someone else's property. And for me, because you begun, I sell your property, someone else comes in, and he doesn't get along with you. And you're going to say, well, you know what? This is, these are my stairs.
But that's what they're saying. If it's to the property, not to the owner, but to the property.
I think, like I said, that's why we have to do some due diligence. I think Ashley will maybe, will take it to the second step because there must have been a reason, and that's the...
I'm not going to argue. Yeah, I mean, I have no problem with granting an easement.
I just feel that our hands are tied because we were given specific instruction that the city is no longer selling property. And so now the first, and we, we're, I can speak for me. I'm on your side.
Do you realize I actually already thought I handled that part of it by finding, by telling? Doug has been helping us. No longer here, can't speak for himself. But in the queue to us meant applied for. We didn't realize there was another definition for in the queue. But I obviously read that article and said, cool. I'm in the queue. There's still a consideration you have, which is probably about the easement. And I have no problem granting it. So let's just, if we need to do it differently, fine. Just I ask if you can work with me on my schedule. I don't know if I'll be in town.
Do you want to make a motion?
Well, yes.
I'd like to make a motion, two things. One, this Council or this board defines what is the queue. Like Schmitzer is under the impression that it's not in the queue. The gentleman before us feels that it is in the queue, and I think that that's paramount to the next steps that would follow. So I make the first motion. We need to get an understanding of, is his case in the queue or not in the queue? The second that I would add to that is, we need to have more of a definition from City Council to understand the background of why this property, why the city took back the property. And based on those two things, they sort of go, they're tied to the tip on each. Because if it's in the queue, then he can proceed forward. If it's not in the queue, that opens the door for another round of stuff. And then obviously, the underlying thing is understanding why the city took this back.
Okay, response, you haven't actually made a motion. But anyway, that we can either move to table this or we can move it on to the City Council. These questions that are being raised will be addressed before they vote on it.
So however you phrase that.
So anyway, that...
I can make a motion here. We have a motion before us here that we can make it if we don't want a table.
I don't want a table for the guy. I'd like to get it into the hands of the City Council sooner than later. So they can, there's a couple things defining the queue. I have a piece of property that I'm trying to buy. I never knew I wasn't in the queue.
The intention is not to punish you, Mr. Carvino. The intention is not to punish you and make you wait longer. It's to, for us to all be on the same page so we know what we're doing.
I was a compliance manager for many years, so I understand doing things by the letter of the regulations.
Okay.
So how, do you want to take what I just said and put it in the motion?
Well, I was going to, well, I was going to make a motion together that we bring this, I make a motion that we bring this thing up at our next meeting after we hear from Ray regarding the city requirements, and we put a vote to approving this with the caveat that it needs city approval. We may decide to make...
Yes.
The new rules. Okay?
So we approve it. That way he doesn't have to come back to us again. I'm good with that.
Yeah.
So this would be the motion that...
I'll take my motion and give it to him.
Well, there's a motion here that you can present it unless you want to modify it.
So then this will take it off of us and put it onto City Council.
Correct.
I move, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends to the mayor and the City Council the transfer of 87 square feet of city-owned property located primarily south of 136 Oak Street, more specifically defined by the legal description as the corner of number three of, you say it, I can't explain. This is an unaddressed parcel described as portion of APN 103 99 034 C for the sum of $2 per square foot for the total of $174.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, you have a second. I'll do a roll call vote there. Mike Abbott.
Approve.
Okay. John is not here. David Cobb.
Approve.
Okay. Douglas Dunn, aye. Andy's not here. Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Mike Schmitzer?
Yes.
Okay. Pass. Moved it on to Mel.
Thanks.
I know. Because, sure, there's nothing against you, like Nancy was just saying. We just want to make sure it doesn't come back to us. We need to make sure everything is going by the law.
And of course, you understand, I'm super interested in being present. I just want to make sure I can be.
Don't worry. The property is not going anywhere.
I mean, I don't want to lose this. Now that the fish is on the hook.
Okay, we, just to add. I have been invited, gotten letters to different things that happen on Oak Street in the near area. But it hasn't been with the City Council. It's been with you guys. If City Council could do something like that for us?
Usually when they're noticed for things like that, it has both dates. Just like on this notice.
So it's the last fifth.
Yeah. It has both dates. It says Planning and Zoning and Mayor and Council. That's the notice. Has both dates.
Okay, but we don't know it. Would this be tabled then? Would this be brought up then?
Yeah, you'll have to...
It's noticed for the fifth, so we have to put it on the fifth agenda. I don't know yet. I'm going to speak to the attorneys tomorrow and find out what we need to do as far as research and everything.
All right.
If there's changes...
Do I have contact for you? Go ahead. Your name and number?
Thank you.
Hadier? And then you put Ernie. Garcia?
Okay.
What is my number?
Perfect. Okay.
Would you like Mel?
Uh, no, this will work.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move on to...
Thank you.
Move on to Agenda Item Two. Discussion of Possible Direction to Staff Regarding Entertainment District Designation with Possible Different Noise Regulations. Use of Order 0-200-01. Commissioner, this is brought to us by Commissioner Schmitzer. Do you wish to speak on this?
We had a discussion last meeting regarding the entertainment zone. And again, staff didn't quite get it right. We were asking for a map of the entertainment district to be provided to the staff.
Okay.
Or, excuse me, to the commission here.
Okay.
Because we were all wondering what entailed the entertainment district.
Okay.
We had all seen it, and I think most of us have seen it at one time or another, but we just don't know where it was. In the same effort, Nina went ahead and sent all of us copies or location for all of the codes, the zoning code and all the codes. We should have all gotten that, that we could print it up and have our own copies. What she didn't do, she didn't give us a copy of the city addendums to the building code. The city addendums to the building code. That wasn't expressed to Nina. There was nothing in particular on that. We were just wanting to know what the rules and regulations were and where the entertainment zone existed.
Okay. I can make sure you guys get the copy of the map and everything. That's no problem.
There's been some complaints to me regarding, what's the hotel?
De Jongh Quill.
What?
De Jongh Quill.
The De Jongh Quill playing music.
So that's in residential, but...
I know there's things that, but we just wanted to see what the rules were on that.
Okay.
De Jongh Quill's been pretty good. Yeah. I don't really have a complaint about that, but it would give me some a little bit if we understood what those rules were.
What the areas were and, okay, no problem.
Do you understand there's zoning, and then there's an entertainment district?
Right.
It has a different noise requirements.
That's correct. You can still be a commercial business, but not in an entertainment district. And then henceforth, there would be some noise, there could be some noise rules and regulations to that.
But there is no map available right now. Got you.
I'll make sure you get one. No problem.
Thank you.
Okay.
Of course.
Staff comments, no discussion. And again, these are things that have been, I've alluded to here. We have been provided links to the zoning code and city charter and so forth, and you're going to supplement that. And then also there's a question about the short-term rental taxes. And that information is provided to us here. So I don't know that any further information was requested at the past meeting and it's provided to us. Now move on to commission comments. And this is an area in which you can make any comments, but no discussion.
I'm not selling my building. But I sold today. And I got about 50,000 phone calls from people I didn't even know. I just put it up because I was curious of what the market would bear. I like it here, love it here. I'm looking forward to opening. My intention is not to sell it. So I went, we hope to open up now Labor Day, just for whatever it's worth. And we're working with the city, and we're working with everyone, and we're excited to be a part of this. If anyone asks, no, don't call me. I'm not selling. Call Nancy.
Other comments or suggestions for Agenda Items?
I wanted to make a comment regarding the staff comments about short-term rentals. I understand that you guys do receive short-term rentals. The caveat is, is there's a whole lot of Airbnb short-term rentals that are not licensed, do not have a TPT number, nor are they paying room tax. There is a significant amount of them here.
So what staff has been doing, just so you guys have a little bit of background and history on that, the finance department in particular, they go on to Airbnb, they go on to VRBO, they go on to all the sites and try to find the ones that we don't have knowledge of. They've been making contact with those businesses to ensure that they do have business licenses, to ensure that they have the correct TPT numbers, that sort of thing. So staff is constantly working on that.
Can we make another comment? About two months ago, the PD gave out a hotline number for graffiti. Is there some sort of hotline number or place that we could send if we are aware of non-licensed Airbnbs?
You can always call City Hall and talk to the person who does business licenses because she's the one who is...
Mrs. Ward?
Correct.
Did you send that off to us?
I'd be happy to, absolutely.
By who to talk to?
Yep.
The reason being is, that I bring this up is, Bisbee is short on money. You're...
Yeah, I'm always looking, I'm always looking for money.
And as an angry business owner who does pay all his taxes, when you see other people that are not paying their taxes, it irritates you a little bit.
Yeah, I totally agree with what Mike's saying. I don't know how you go about it. I mean, how would you, I mean, this is, I think it can be privacy. I don't know. It's something we have to be very careful.
Yes, it is privacy.
Like somebody is calling and somebody did up their own life.
I can call Freedom of Information request for you. Get it.
We can use me as an example.
Sure.
So in 2016, I had my house on Airbnb, and for five months of 2017, I did Airbnb my home. I did receive, I was one of the people that did receive the letter from the city of Bisbee, and I have not Airbnb my home for four years. So the letter that I received said that I had been on Airbnb since 2016, which is in fact true, but I had not actually Airbnb my house in over four years. So the flaw, the flaw in that is, is if you're going on to a website, for example, then one could make the case that you're not going around to every dog groomer website, you're not going around to every hairdressing website, and you're not going around to all, so you're not going around to these websites. And in my case, for example, there was, you know, a very good reason, personal health, I'm a cancer survivor. So while I was away getting treatments, that's when I Airbnb my home. But I haven't Airbnb my home, so I have never, I've never, I don't have a TPT tax. I don't, nothing. But I haven't Airbnb my house in four years. So if a person is receiving that letter, how did they inform me? How was, how was one person single now, or five people, 10 people, or whatever? But then there are other businesses in the community that also need a TPT tax, maybe not a hotel tax, but they do need a TPT tax.
Absolutely.
So are we, just a suggestion, are we also going to then look at all of the, I'm making stuff up now. Are we going to look at all of the hairdressers and the dog groomers and the tattoo places and the this, and we're going to make sure, and we're going to go on all the websites, then those people are going to get a letter? There has to be a uniform...
We absolutely do our best to ensure that we are uniform all across the board.
That's right.
We have people searching all over. Because we know people do duck out and they don't want to pay their portion and their share. So yes, we are even across the board.
Yeah, and that was, that was just more of, you know, since we keep on diving into this, and then I actually showed Sandy the last meeting, I go, hey, I got my letter, but I haven't actually done that in a long time, since 2017. So I'm just saying, you're going to also, if there's going to be other people that get a letter, that may or may not actually be doing something wrong, not to say that there aren't people that are.
I'll give you an example. You know Beth. Beth has had a real estate license office. The city of Bisbee has never conducted any business. But she does pull license every year, a TPT tax, even though she has never sold a single property here. If you're a business and you are offering your services, if you're on Airbnb, you are offering your services, even though you may not accept any contracts. I just look at it this way here. Bisbee is really, really short on money. Really short on money. And there's a lot of people, I'm not quoting anybody, but there's, I know a lot of people that are escaping big time. We have a lot of contractors here in town that don't pull building permits. In fact, Joe Ward sat here in a meeting and said, we named a contractor. He says, boy, they're the biggest offenders out there for not pulling building permits.
And then we're constantly chasing those as well.
Right. So we're just saying, we all feel the pinch of the city lacking funds. We get it. It's just that how do we, you know, how do we grow and go through our growing pains and deal with things that are businesses or business models that, you know, are new because of COVID or because of technology or because of whatever? Because I'm sure that this isn't going to be the, whether it's short-term rentals aren't going away, or that, you know, ADUs are going to bring in another source of income in another way. or that, uh, you know, ADUs are gonna bring in another source of income in another way. Uh, I said this four or five years ago, I said, we don't have things on the books so that when a problem comes to Bisbee, Bisbee's five years behind it in trying to correct it. And we're only this big anyway, and everyone here has multiple jobs. So how do you take a community that, you know, again, uh, the person who lasted marketing for the city did a phenomenal job, and we are reaping the rewards of her doing her job well? But behind there, we, we don't have this one, we don't have that one, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a gel, um, way of making sure that everyone is doing their part and everyone is doing their fair share and everyone's paying their taxes. And that, you know, I mean, you're not gonna have a hundred percent compliance, but you're not gonna have twenty percent compliance either.
So Nancy, it's incumbent upon mayor and council, in construction, you have what's called code enforcement. The assumption is that if you're a licensed bonded insured general contractor, you're supposed to pull a permit. You don't pull a permit, it's the building official who does his very best to, to understand. The whole reason why you submit a permit is based on the permit goes in and now it's an acknowledgement for tax revenue. So my point is that if Airbnb's are a growing problem, we need to make a motion to mayor and council, and mayor and council has to develop some type of a means and methods to properly put out some type of code or something.
Correct, we did, Michael, but I'm just saying, and I'm sorry you missed that couple of the last meetings, um, the state said we can't.
The state said we can't do that.
Correct. Correct. So the, so the state, the state has already spoken.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
How about Airbnb, yeah, states, that's a state issue, yeah.
So I'm just saying, if, if, you know, if, if.
I mean, one of the ideas I brought to the city council, so you guys know, I said, I did some research, and there was a couple of cities, like in Paris, in a couple, you know, that were able to control Airbnb, that were imposing the number of nights. For example, I own a property, will come to you, you can only rent it for Airbnb for four nights. You do your calculation, you find out, well, it's not enough. So let me, because the issue, the reason I brought that up, because of the shortage of housing for half the people. So I said, if we put some pressure on the Airbnb, maybe we can have some housing for the, for people who need housing. And like we said, uh, the state, it's not something that we have jurisdiction over.
So we have to file.
It's a state issue.
File an appeal to the state.
Well, I, I mean, I brought it up, so it's something that I did bring up personally.
It's Ducey's, it's Ducey's pet project about four years ago, you cannot rescript Airbnb's anywhere in the state of Arizona.
Just, just one thing I would like, I know this is an op, is this the open forum, so I can say whatever?
Yes, I guess.
No, just before I go, if I go, if I go back, because to be on the issue of the, of the parcel we just talked about, uh, just to make sure I understand this, because apparently you guys have seen and talked about this before. Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, I'm talking about the, this, this seven stairs that's included in this, that this gentleman wants to own. Did we, I mean, after you guys looked at all of this, that you go and made sure that those stairs are not public stairs? And that's the wider reason, and they are private, someone can say, well, the stairs here, they go to my neighbor's house, and I talk to him, and he's gonna let me have it. So we made this decision, so I, when I speak to the council, being a liaison, I want to understand what was the logic, saying, okay, we approve this, we're gonna let you have those seven stairs, but depends on what the city council says. Did you guys look at this, at this, at the seven stairs that's included?
Well, that's why I had made the moment.
Yeah, this is seven stairs that we are willing to say, oh, you can really come by. And I wanna make sure that when I'm talking, I'm going back, uh, we can, uh, we're ready, it's, I have no problem with that parcel, the little land that he's gonna take, but he wants seven stairs included in this.
And Mel, that's why I had asked the question, there's seven stairs, we need to understand, well, you have to go back to the chain of title and go back.
Yes, we have to be very, I would, would, you know, if I go in, I wanna just make sure, make a note of this.
Right.
Because I don't say, oh, well, the, the board has agreed and approved, and it's up to us. But the board, you have to be able to defend that, that the seven stairs that we're giving away.
But it's also gonna be a case-by-case basis, because, uh, where I was on my very first home up on Tamby, it had, it wasn't seven, it was like fourteen, and it was, it was a city staircase that was falling into my property, and no one ever did anything for, no one did anything to repair those stairs. Now, I didn't know that I could buy them, because I just thought that they were city stairs. But there are many staircases that are either disintegrating, uh, or disintegrated, um, or in such disrepair. So as something comes up in front of planning and zoning, like for example, this one, this goes to Mr. Garcia's two properties, but he also said that he, that they have access, legal access from the other side. So this gentleman doesn't need to even give a, uh, a, a, a legal easement, because Mr. Garcia can get to his property another way, so there's, he's not landlocked. But there are other stairs in the city that are completely disintegrating, um, into the ground, and the city owns them. And I'm just saying, it might be, it might behoove the city just to, uh, do something going forward, or there might be a set, set of stairs, like behind Mimosa, that, um, that goes to everywhere on OK Street, it goes to Youngblood, it goes to, and, you know.
Anyway, I just want to make sure that you, that there's clarity on this, so I go from here. But I will, I'll, I'll make sure that that's clear, and that, that the city is able to say, oh, well, I will let you have the seven stairs.
Right, and previous to, um, this person or previous to another person coming up in front of, um, planning and zoning, uh, I've been on the commission for four years now, and I'm just saying, uh, other things were allowed previous to a date, let's just say the date was yesterday. So we have, from this point going backwards, people are doing this and getting things approved and things are going, and now you have a couple of people wanting to do the right thing, and they're caught in the wheel. But these people, trust me, they got away with a lot.
Well, I, I'm not disputing, and I agree with you, I just wanna make sure it's all fair, it's done, all done right. I mean, I can't look at what the person did in the past, but I can see what we can do in the future.
So that's why I'm saying, everyone needs to be, like, have a, a similar shot, whether it is, because Mel, the other thing that came up in front of us is like this, for example, is two dollars a square foot. There was another one for nine, there's another one for five, there was one for one fifty, there was one for this, there was one for that. Now, I'm not saying that I would not recuse myself if I was asked to give an opinion of value, but when it was brought up in front of me, I said, no one has ever approached me, ever. In my whole time of being a real estate agent in Bisbee, Arizona, I have never been approached to give, and the word is not appraisal, it's an opinion of value. Realtors cannot give appraised value, we are not legal appraisers. We can give opinions of value, and I can tell you that one was sold for one fifty, this one sold for, this one's, one thirty-seven was another number, nine dollars was another number.
And, and that's another reason why we put the moratorium on the property sales. Because that all needs to be figured out.
There has been just one agent giving price opinions. She calls them appraisals, but they're really price opinions.
And this is one of the things, and I'm not here bragging, this is one of the things I brought up. You know, we have to have, we have to have a uniformity, we have to make sure it's done right. Because this is a city, this, these properties are owned by taxpayers of this town. We can't just decide, oh, we're gonna give this, it's not up to us, we have to be fair, and it has to be fair for the.
Correct, and I'm just saying, you know, if we're just giving out comments, I would love to, to help the city, give a, give a fair opinion of value. If I wanted to purchase one of those parcels, then I would recuse myself from giving an opinion of value. But up, but up until this date, there's been a lot of property coming through here that I could have given my opinion of value as a commissioner, that I had no vested interest in.
Ashley, what is, Mel, what's the status of this request coming to us to help formulate a new regulation or anything?
I don't know the term.
I think Joseph is working on this now, actually, the last, that's a good question. Uh, Joe, our attorney, is, is working on a formula, is working on some, and he's gonna come back to us, something that we'll talk about, and he is working on something that's gonna be detailed, it's gonna be fair, that's something that'll make it easier. To be honest with you, I didn't, as a council person, I didn't like the ideas, you know, auctioning land, where I, I told him, I said, I don't know what to decide. I don't know if it's a dollar, I don't know if it's two dollars, it's not up to me. And this is some of the things that we have talked about, and that's why the lawyer is gonna go work on the system, work on the fair, so it's easier for us to make a decision without thinking.
Or, or we were told, or the commission, a possible motion was put in front of us, and it was always saying, oh, this is of no use to the city. And then if a couple of us go out and look around, I'm like.
You're right.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, that's, that's someone else's opinion, because I can think of fifteen reasons why this is of value to the city.
Thank you, thank you, Nancy, and you're right, because I, I heard those, and I can be honest, and I, I, I question those. What do you mean? Why are, what's that based on? And that's why we, Ashley said, and Joe is working on a detailed formula, so we can all follow and make sure we're doing the right.
I think this is a very critical component, and we can't let this thing slide like the parking issue or the ADUs. It needs to be resolved in probably two or three months. So if, if one of you two could give us bi-weekly updates or something where it's sitting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to, actually, you know, maybe this week, I'll talk to Joe and see what he stands on this, so I can give you an idea of where he stands on, on coming up with this plan.
Can I clarify something about the parcel on OK Street?
Yeah.
Uh, the city recently acquired it, it had been private property before then, and it's wanting to be private property again. So the stairs were never public stairs, they're private stairs that were owned by the, correct?
So from what we're trying to understand is before nineteen sixty-five, that family that was the, he said, he said the.
Carpenter.
Mr. Garcia said the Carpenter family. So if the Carpenter family built the stairs, and then, then I'm making up a scenario, didn't wanna take care of them or didn't want, whatever.
We don't quite know.
Then they gave it to the city, and then they became city stairs, so they were never city stairs to begin with, from my understanding. They became city stairs through.
Look, my point is simpler than that, the city can own a parcel with stairs on it, that does not make the stairs public property, because the city owns them, that's it.
Yes, it does.
Yes?
Yeah.
You see, the reason I, I, you know, I stopped on this, because we had a similar case where a person, uh, wanted to own the stairs, but we found out there's a piece of land behind this, and eventually, we don't want to leave that. We, we don't want to make a decision on this where later on, someone else that owned the other house, they're gonna come back, and this guy said, well, I'm gonna let you come in, but you're gonna pay me twenty thousand dollars for that.
Like Mr. Garcia is giving up a potential easement, if he, if the property transfers back private without an easement, he's lost his opportunity for an easy easement. Am I right? You know, you guys are way more experienced than I am.
He's losing his opportunity to get an easement from the stairs down. Mr. Garcia's already said that he has another way to come up. But, correct, uh, the, the new owner, so say these two had new owners. It would be between them to figure it out.
But you, but, yeah, but then you live in that flaw, you know, between them, and supposedly, they don't come to an understanding.
Correct.
They have to, you come back to us, say, well, you guys did this, you approved this, and this is why I wanted to be careful with this. I wanna make sure to go back without just coming back and hitting us.
Well, the, the bigger problem is you get a bunch of kids that are underage drinking and go sit on the stairs and fall down the stairs and break their arm. And the city owns the stairs, the city's gonna get sued. Uh, I mean, both, so the city, it's incumbent upon the city to get this situation remedied, lickety-split, because it, it's a huge problem, it's, it's a liability for the city, that I can tell you. So the more data that we can get to understand why the city took it back in the first place, if there's no under, if there's no underlying reason for the city to have taken it back, other than they just took it back, then give it back and get rid of it, as soon as possible. It's a liability that you guys don't wanna have.
Well, also we have situations where property, private property deeds to the city, but it's never gonna accept it.
Yeah.
There's a second step to that, people saying they've deeded something to the city. At some point, there has to be a record that was officially accepted by the city for not to have any merits. So I mean, it would have.
So is it possible, in this particular case, is it possible that the city never accepted it back?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
In that case, how can they sell it?
We can't, if they don't own it.
We'd have, we'd have to get a legal opinion of that, definitely.
Yeah, this is already.
We're definitely gonna have to get a legal.
We're gonna have to go to the lawyer on this.
And this is, this is my only point, is this is about seventeen square feet by forty-eight inches on one side, right?
Yes.
We have already heard way more square footage than this previously.
Yeah.
And, and it, um, I think it's sad, we're dragging somebody else through it for something that appears so easy, when we already approved way more square footage.
And I agree with you, the only issue I have, uh, the stairs. I, I have no problem with it, you're right, it's not gonna make a difference, nobody's gonna build on it, it's not gonna make, and we agree, you should have this. My only concern is the stairs.
Yeah.
The, the piece of property, yeah, that's not a big deal, I have no problem with that.
What is your concern with the stairs, Mel, specifically?
Specifically, specifically, even though, uh, I think the other gentleman, Mr. Garcia saying, I have no problem, but still, that's an access to that property.
But it, but it's not the only access.
Yeah, but still, yes, you know, I can have two access, I can say, well, this is, you know, this is my property, I have had access. I'm just, you don't leave it alone.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, my, my other issue is, why did the city, based on what he said, the city took it? I just want to find out, that's all. For me, it's not like, oh, I'm against it, no, like I said, I'm for it, it's not a big deal.
It seems relatively easy.
Yes, it's easy, but, but we have to make sure, because this could, because we've had a situation where someone had and threatened, uh, because we were gonna auction some, uh, and this guy said, you know what, I'm not gonna let them pass, I own those stairs, I own the highway, I'm not gonna let them, and that's why I want to avoid it, for future reasons, that's all.
But I, I see that as being Garcia's responsibility to get that easement or whatever, you know?
But I say, I, I don't have the answer, so, yeah.
You have to represent the city to Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, unfortunately, old Bisbee, there are many cases like this, you know, in which the survey was inconsistent with what, how people are now managing that property, and often what happens, I mean, over history, there's agreement with neighbors in terms of how, how you're gonna access the stairway or whatever, whatever. But now newcomers coming in buying properties, they quote, wanna clean things up, and so that's certainly why we're having more types of applications. And, and so we certainly did.
And that's a good thing, that's not a bad thing.
Oh, it's very much so.
Right.
That's a, that's a good thing.
To do a survey in Bisbee, old Bisbee in particular, is extremely difficult. It takes an old-school surveyor that really understands, and, and I don't know the particulars, but it has something to do with how things are marked. You, you literally can't stick the satellite up in the air like the guys do it normally. You have to actually know where specific markings are. And I've experienced it firsthand on my building, took me nine months to get the survey. So it's, it's not, it's, I will tell you, it's not an easy thing.
It's all based off of old mining claims.
Yes.
And the monuments are a hundred and fifty years old.
The GPS doesn't work, because it can't get up to the canyon, and it can't do the eye in the sky. And so you have to have a, you have to have an old-school surveyor that understands how Bisbee operates. Most people will not come down, most surveyors, when you hear Bisbee, they don't wanna come down here. They're like, that's a disaster, there's shit all over the place. And that's because of the mining claims, and there's boundaries that overlap each other, and you gotta go through mounds and mounds and mounds of paperwork.
But then, if we're being honest, then we have to, well, I would be the only one to get entered into this conversation. You also have people fighting, there, like, you've seen how many listings there are, everything's being snatched up.
Right.
Um, how many of the buyers, how many of the sellers didn't disclose what they knew to be true about their property? And how many of the buyers were told by legal counsel or legal representation to not get a survey, because it would take too long?
Yeah, I mean, that's a whole nother.
Correct.
It's a whole nother rabbit hole to go down to, and then it comes back to your title company.
Because I'm just saying, if, for example, if I am representing a buyer, and my buyer wants to get a survey, and then my contract is not accepted by another, um, by a seller or by an agent telling my buyer not to get accepted, because it would take too long to get a survey. On a three-hundred or a four-hundred or a five-hundred, or sometimes now we have one, a six-hundred thousand dollar sale, so you're telling, so I'm saying, there are, there could or could not be, I'm not making any assumptions, there could or could not be, uh, other representatives, um, representing buyers in town, that are actually telling people that it would take too long to do that process, so just don't do that. That, that could be another thing that's happening in Bisbee, because it's a seller's market.
And then you got people that just buy shit at the auction without even looking at the stuff, like these are afraid of. They just buy stuff for the sake of buying it, because if somebody wants to acquire it, they use that as leverage to charge them more for it, because they want that little seventeen square foot.
And so I'm saying, when it comes, whenever all that stuff happens out there in the real world, and then when it comes to us, what is, what is, um, uh, you know, the average price? What is the, what is?
That's true.
So when it comes to us, so that we don't beat this thing to death.
Yes, true.
Um, we have, you know, we have A, B, C, D, E, and if it doesn't, then we say, it's not us, sir, it's this.
Very good.
It's incumbent upon them, if they wanna, if they wanna challenge it, then they have to buy a. It's incumbent upon them, if they want to challenge it, then they have to buy, take for a survey.
That's true. What you said, Nancy, is correct, and that's why I had a problem personally.
I think we all have.
I just didn't know, you know, need to tell me, it's five, how would I know?
Right, and before, you know...
Five, two, three, whatever.
Before you're talking about things that are like, you know, things were done on a handshake and hey, we'll talk it out. But now you have people maybe in Connecticut that want to buy in Bisbee and they don't even know the topography of Bisbee, because that happens all day, every day now.
Copycat or buyer beware. It's the buyers, I mean, you've been doing real estate long enough, Nancy, it's the buyer's responsibility. And if the seller doesn't want to wait, that's unfortunate, and then whoever buys it, they may have bought, and it happens all the time.
But then it's going to come before us.
If it comes before us, we turn to them and say, where's your survey?
Right, or we're going to say, what's the process now? And have we figured out that it's not $1.50, $1.37, $2, $1?
That's a conduit to that, and that's something that we can easily solve because you have a commercial appraiser, you got a residential appraiser. We just have to establish some protocol to how you're going to, how you're going to do the valuation.
But the city of Bisbee has no money. How is the city of Bisbee going to hire an appraiser? Right now, the city of Bisbee, if they could hire an appraiser, I'm sure they would have done that. They're not. They're hiring a, well, I don't know, but I don't know who they're hiring. But I'm just saying, it's not an appraiser who's giving appraised value, it's an opinion of value.
That we can't do.
That's right.
That's a good question. That's a good something, maybe we'll come look at this and maybe, you know, an appraiser and that we can tag that cost because you can say, we don't have money. But there's always a solution, you know, will I praise it, whatever it costs us, we'll tag it onto the price. And whoever's buying it, yes.
So condition on the sale is something.
Yeah, we can do that. You see, this is a little difficult, but we just have to think of it. Say, okay, you know what, the city has spent that much money? In addition to what the price has gone for, we're going to charge you that eight, or nine, whatever.
Right, that's, our, the city's incurred cost to get to this derived value is put on the backside.
I like that. Well, I might just comment that we, part of the debate was how much should be charged. And people looked at this and it seemed extremely cheap when we were charging, the city was charging for these pieces of fall property. And certainly when I first came on the planning and zoning commission, it was customary that we did this without any charge. I mean, we just was trying to work things out. People identified they got a problem, and so we facilitated working that out. So it was a more recent decision in terms of we had to charge people assessed value for that property because the city needs money. But anyway, this has kind of evolved over time. And part of it is not just what is the fair value of this property, but also what's right in terms of correcting these various crazy situations that exist in old Bisbee, so.
Right, if I wanted to sell a property and I knew that I had a retaining wall that was falling and staircases that I was going to be legally responsible for, I'd go, oh, hey, I'm going to sell my property. Here, here Bisbee, here.
Anything else? Do we have a motion for a tournament?
I make a motion.
Okay, we are. Thank you, Mel, thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.